Hello, Aaron.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
How are you? Theo, sorry, we haven't been able to touch base yet. I didn't want to just, I couldn't find your cellphone number. But uh. Give it to me through an email. I just didn't know what your schedule looked like, so.
Sure, no, and it's the, I think it's more my fault. I kept having windows of time closed. Like, ah! All right.
All good, we'll find the time.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all right, so I have claim the host code. I think I've, yep. I enabled the captioning, so that's good. Bill's in his car.
Yes, I'm at La Crosse with my daughter, so this was the meeting that I wasn't sure I'd be able to make, so hopefully it works out.
Well, thank you very much. Yeah, you know, it would be okay for you to be on the, on the sideline, so.
Well, I'm not driving, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good, and best not to make me the co-host, because I'm not sure about my connection.
Yeah, I understand. We appreciate the. How you doing, Jim? Welcome back.
Thank you, how are you doing there, Theo?
Okay. Hope your trip was successful.
Yeah, it's honestly, I go down there once a month for some equity representation, so it was, you know, business as usual, unfortunately.
All right, all right. Business as usual is better than unusual.
It is, it is definitely different. They're interesting though, seeing how, how, how much different things are down, down in the south compared to here. I, we talked about the pricing of what, what thing, certain things cost, and I always am shocked at how cheap it is down there.
Yeah, yeah, all right. All right, well, maybe not land, but maybe.
Yeah, it's, it's funny, because this didn't like this, like, like four, four or five square mile, or you know, block area in, in Atlanta. There's like eight high-rise jobs that I can't even shudder how long it would take to get one of those approved here. And just, I was laughing at how much everything's just going crazy over there.
Oh, boy, oh, boy, there it is. Yeah, well, there was an article on the Globe talking about how, uh, the, the stat was twenty-seven months to get something approved here, but some communities in California, five months. So, worth the, worth some.
Based on my previous experience, I a hundred percent believe it, slash, depending, depending on the scale of what you're talking about, it's significantly longer than that.
Yeah.
The, the, the project I just finished in Kendall Square, they, I think it was like a five-year entitlement process. It was also like a huge project, but it was still a lot longer than that.
Wow, wow, wow. Remarkable, boy, yeah.
Well, it's like the, another project one of my colleagues is working on, they're probably not going to put a shovel in the ground until 2024. And the developer on that has been working on it since 2018, I want to say.
All right. Well, that, um, it sort of makes me feel better, or, all right, the, the affordable housing initiatives that, that we get to watch are on a slightly shorter timeline than that, so that's. All right, six years to get a shovel, okay. Yeah.
Yeah, I can't even imagine what the capital cost, or the, the debt service on something like that is. I should, I, I've run the numbers before and it's ugly.
Yeah, yeah. It is amazing, like, yeah, I guess I, you know, as a, right, the construction is relatively easier than everything else, once, once the building's ready to go.
It can be.
Yeah, right, right, right.
It can be, for sure.
Well, a topic for another day. We can do our planning board teachings about the, so it's seven or two.
Are Matt and Megan planning on joining us?
Um, I thought Matt was not today, but that's, I may have a faulty memory, I may be getting Matt's building stuff. And I thought Megan was coming.
I'm not offended by that comment, Theo.
No, no. Said with admiration, so, all right. Well, I am, since we do have a quorum, I guess we can get started and certainly work Megan into the, as she comes, so. So, calling ourselves to order, we do have a quorum, this is the July 12th meeting of the planning board. The, and so I'll read our intro, consistent with the governor's orders, extending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial-in number published in the, the meeting agenda with a meeting ID and passcode. Please only use the, use dial-in or the computer and not both, as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. This location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance free of charge on request. If you're a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternate format, or if you require any other accommodation, please contact the town's disability coordinator. William Renault, town engineer, at seven eight one two four six six three zero eight, as far in advance of the event as possible. Every effort will be made to grant your request. Advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements and to remove an accessibility barrier for you. So with that, uh, call the order, Bill Spalding.
Here.
Jim Hogan.
Here.
All right, and myself, Theo Knowles. The second item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. Any comments or questions, responses? All right, any motion and a second?
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from the, was it June?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
Planning board meeting.
Second.
All right, all in favor, Bill?
Hi.
Jim?
I will abstain, I was not at that meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And myself, I will approve, so, very good, and, uh, the third item on the agenda is to ask Aaron and others on the planning board for an update on MBTA communities requirements timeline. This is something that we know is in flux, but the more information we can get and sort of stay on top of it, I think we would find helpful. And Jim, I don't know if there's anything you want to say by way of introduction as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we, we've talked about this a decent amount, but I think we're kind of getting to the point where would be who of us as a board to start outlining how we want to approach this topic. I think what probably makes a little bit of sense is to, to, to ask Aaron, you know, what, what did the update in terms of the, the, the guidance between the NMP and the state? Otherwise, I would advocate for this board to start outlining a process whereby we define a compliant based on the draft guidelines in order to queue up that information such that the town, if it so chose, could act upon it at a, at a future town meeting date to, in order to secure the continuation of the funds that are being tied to it.
So, thank you, and that, yeah, I think that's sort of the, right, common agenda items, so, thank you. Aaron, do you have any updates from, from your side of things, knowing that things are in flux?
Yeah, I unfortunately don't have anything to report tonight about anything internally that we're, we're doing, or anything that I've heard from the state or working with town administrator, administrator Mayo. On this process, I unfortunately don't have anything to report other than what everyone saw with the town council meeting with that presentation back in, back in the end of April. And, you know, I have reached out to other communities just to see if we're behind in the process. I don't think we are. I think we're still, the state's still trying to figure out, you know, like what I've mentioned before. You know, what's with the units, what counts, what doesn't count, kind of what our district is. And, you know, I think the requirements are out there, but there's still a lot of unanswered questions of what this is going to look like, so. I also, I think I'll go back to my point, I don't want to, we, it was briefly discussed at our master plan meeting last Wednesday when we discussed housing, but we are not basing our housing chapter around MBTA communities. I mean, it's part of the discussion, but it's not something that we're planning for our housing moving forward. And so that's really all I have, you know, to report. I think Wakefield, again, applies MBTA communities, but also might not, depending on what regulations are passed, that we're a little ahead of what other communities have with our mixed-use district, and if we can count some of those units or look at that as a district and maybe look at some other options of housing, that's not just multifamily that Jim alluded to, I think, the two meetings ago. And then maybe we look at our zoning in general. I think that should be part of the conversation as well as we move forward. But in regards to timeline, public meetings, what we're thinking internally, I do not have anything to report at this time, so.
Are there? So, right, the, the published timelines seem to be changing, is that right? I mean, like, we've talked about this.
So, I mean, I know there was, they wanted to have the last timeline, I'm trying to pull it up here. You know, they wanted us to have public meetings come the summer. You know, we're in July right now, but how can we have meetings and put information out there if we don't even know exactly what this, this is going to look like? You know, I don't want to cause commotion amongst people. I mean, it doesn't mean we shouldn't plan for it, but you know, I don't want to put information out there, and then it changed at the state level, given the pushback they might have gotten from communities and other organizations throughout the Commonwealth, so I'm trying to, I did have the timeline up and what that looked like, but I believe, you know, that, that's going to be hard to stay, to schedule, given that I still, you know, I have, I haven't heard anything, so, that's what I have.
Yeah.
I, my, my understanding, reviewing the documentation prior to this meeting, was that there's, there's, there was intended to be some sort of action plan deliverable produced by each of the municipalities by the end of 2022 with a effective date of whatever the zoning component would be by, I believe, Q4 of 2023. So, you know, I personally think that, you know, there's a lot of information as it relates to, you know, the baselines of, you know, I, I mean, and Aaron, you, I can defer to you, but when going through this, the draft guidelines, I think it's pretty easy to go through at this point and draw, you know, draw a district, go through a checklist of all the different things and say, yep, it, it meets all the requirements. It doesn't seem like that hard of an effort. Um, you know, I would advocate for us as a board to really think about, you know, the level of engagement and what that engagement with the public wants to be in advance of, you know, some of these deliverables that we're talking about, and what engagement we would want to have with either town staff or other elected bodies, thinking primarily of the town council. And I think that it's incumbent upon us, the planning board, is, you know, we are, the planning's in our name, to actually put some, some effort onto this, into this, this item as dictated by the state. I hear what Aaron's saying as it relates to things may be changing, but I think we could at least do our due diligence to, to get the town ready in case, you know, the thing, the elements don't change and that we could have something. And frankly, as an aside, I think that this is probably good public policy, that we should be doing something to this effect anyway. You know, probably more in a holistic master plan update would be a better timeline. But if, if we have to push this forward because of these impositions to the state in order to make sure that we're putting the town in a position that we can secure that funding on a can-go-forward basis, I would advocate strongly that we do so.
Yeah, I, my, my, I appreciate that, Jim, and I appreciate that, Aaron. Bill, any?
No, just sitting back and listening to, you know, I, I, I hear Jim and I understand and I feel the same way, where as a planning board, we should be holding these public meetings and, and sharing the information. We should be that conduit, working with town council to make sure we're delivering the correct information and the town administrator. Obviously, Erin is our guide on this, and I feel like she is the one that's going to help us select the right time, the right channel, the right information. I, I think that's, yeah, I, I just feel strongly that Erin will be our pulse on this, and I still, to Jim's point, if we could be proactive and get in front of this a little bit, I think it would look good for our town. And it might help us with the 2014 overlay district with the mixed use that we put together. So I, I think if we stay on top of that, maybe we could, I mean, is there, and maybe this is more of a question for Erin, is it possible that we could help set the trend and help the state help us by being proactive and saying, hey, look, this is what we already have? Are we go, are we going to miss that window of time to say, oh, no, they're just going to group everybody in the same category? Just a thought.
No, I mean, I, I'm totally for, for being, for being proactive, and like I said, I think we're kind of ahead of the curve with other communities by already having this mixed-use district, even though it's by special permit. And that's a good starting point, I think we want to look at, which also kind of went hand in hand with that lead district that we were discussing as well. So I wouldn't be against us, you know, as the board itself, looking what that currently looks like and also what, you know, has to do with the units as well and kind of what the presentation that was put forth from town administrator Mayo, looking at the areas of Greenwood and our downtown area from the Wakefield commuter rail as being kind of a starting point for us. You know, if that's, wants to be our first place that we, you want to go, I mean, because it has to be, you know, as everyone knows, a half mile from the train or transit. And it's not the commuter rail for us, but the bus station from, from the station, but also, I think there's some, it goes, some of the language is kind of confusing, because it says station or, and then I think somewhere else it said something about stop. So there's some, there's, that's what I'm saying, there's a lot of language too that still has to be cleaned up and clarified. But I don't think it hurts to kind of look at maybe what our current mixed-use district is and, and looking at Greenwood as well as a, you know, as a starting point, so we are kind of ahead of the curve when it comes to having these public meetings. I'm still gonna not push back, but say, I, I would hold off until we have the answers ourselves. And where, you know, we're not getting people confused or up in arms, but it doesn't mean that in these meetings, we can't kind of use it. Go back and look at that, I'm kind of repeating myself, that presentation as a starting point.
Quick, quick, quick question on that, Erin, and Mr. Chair or Jim, please chime in. With our designation as, if, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we're designated not as a commuter rail community, but as a bus, is that correct? But if I understand also from last night's town council meeting and recent rumors, the North Ave bus is being taken away. So, yeah, there's just, there's some stuff to figure out. I, I'm hoping that it does move more to a commuter rail community and not the bus, obviously because of the unit numbers. But maybe we should try to hit whatever numbers we can that maximize the units, but yeah, I'm, I guess I'm just optimistically hesitant to, to move forward with anything until we get some more data, more info.
I would just, I would just caution that we may be overthinking it, right? The, the difference between a bus community and a commuter rail community as, as it relates to the standard has to do with the, the, the minimum number of units that have to be delivered, which is a function of the size of the, you know, which then input in, impacts the, the minimum size of the zoning overlay district. You know, with looking at it and kind of doing some guesstimating, I think that the mixed-use overlay district is probably pretty close to meeting the threshold for the commuter rail, or sorry, for the bus on its own. So if we just took theoretically the mixed-use overlay district and we said that's going to be our MBTA overlay district, it looks to me as if it's, it's close to being able to meet this, and then this whole thing is a moot point and it, it kind of goes away. It, to me, it's kind of a distraction, concentrating on if we're going to be a commuter rail or a bus community, one way or the other. If the, the, the size of the, the overlay district we're talking about adjusting meets both, and it doesn't really matter. Unless, unless the intent of this exercise is to go and whittle down to the exact minimum for every single component. You know, I don't know if that really should be the duck, the, the tail wagging of the dog. I personally think that we're, you know, again, I think that this is probably good public policy, even if the state isn't imposing it. That's, that's Jim Hogan speaking now behalf of everyone else, but I think it probably makes sense for us to start the process of engaging with the community on this, because, you know, it's probably going to be coming regardless, right? I mean, in whatever final shape it is, and if we go ahead and we start the process of defining what we think it makes sense for our community based on, you know, concentrating the, you know, redevelopment near train stations or the, you know, the downtown area of our community. I think that's a, that's a public policy win for us regardless. And so I think we should strongly think about that. If, if that's something that we're interested in as a community, and I think that that engagement is something that probably makes sense for us to start, you know, start that process, because it's not going to be like, we have two public meetings and then we have a zoning ordinance that we're going to the town with. I, I mean, I don't think that that's necessarily going to be a recipe for success.
Um, can, Theo, can you let me share my screen?
Sure.
And I don't know, again, this is the end of April, I don't know if everyone here had a chance to kind of look at what engineering, myself kind of worked on, it's just a quick, oh.
I don't relate, you share your screen, anybody? Sorry, this is terrible.
Theo, I believe if you click on the share content option, there's a little.
Oh, I, I got it now.
Within there.
So I don't know if anyone has seen this presentation, I believe I sent it to Jim after our last meeting. But these are just examples of some of the zoning areas that engineering put together with our GIS and kind of going along the lines of the unit that we currently have to follow, what the, the minimum total land. So I just wanted to show this real quick, as I was kind of alluding to a starting point. Again, this is very much a draft, it's putting us out there, the public, if there's anyone in the public or listens to this after, this was just an example zoning areas, but they are around kind of our, our current bus stations. And so I just wanted to share that with everyone, so. And that, maybe that's something we start with, it doesn't mean that's what it is, but happy to share that with everyone as well.
But to Aaron's point, you know, and I, and I, I thought that those, those representative maps of what something could be were great. And I thought it was a really good, good, you know, process that you, you and engineering ran. But if you just pulled, if you just pulled the last one up, you had up there, I think it was like 215 acres, something like that was the first, the first one that essentially envisioned, if you go back up to the red, the red district. So like, this 214 acres would meet the requirement by itself. It, you know, regardless if it was the commuter rail or the bus community, it doesn't really matter, right? The, the bus community, which is the one that's more, you know, requires more, computes a minimum acreage of 150 acres. This right here is two, two fourteen by itself, and then the other two examples that Aaron showed, I believe were like thirty-seven and twenty, which the twenty might be a little redundant with some of that stuff where I, that was right there. But you, you know what I mean? So I guess to my point, you know, it doesn't matter if we're, like, we don't need to get in this big fight with the state if we're a bus community or a commuter rail community, if those are the types of things that we're looking at, right? And, and I think that that's a why, and I think that those types of geometries of, of these districts probably make a lot of sense. So, you know, I would advocate that, you know, I thought that the presentation that got put together and presented to town council was excellent. You know, I thought it did a really good job. There's also a very good presentation that the state put out in approximately January of this year. That had a lot of also good information that looked very similar to a lot of the information from that one. But I think that, that, that community engagement with that level, you know, it's been presented to the town council, a lot of the information is probably pertinent to any conversations we want to have, to solicit with the public as we start the process of crafting whatever we, we would think would be a quality starting point. And then I personally think that, you know, if we as a planning board do that work now, then there's probably an opportunity for us to go report to town council, have that conversation with town council, you know, bring more awareness to the, to the community. You know, and then have, you know, in my mind, it would make sense at some point where we actually have a presentation to the, to the community in, you know, probably a town meeting that we're not voting on it, but we're talking about, like, this is what we're working on to jive, drive, you know, awareness, for general awareness of what we're looking at. You know, I think, like, talking about that process, that, you know, that's just me talking, right? But talking about what that looks like as a board and then, you know, starting it, I think is something that we're at the point where we're probably, you know, it probably doesn't make sense for us to have. It probably doesn't make sense for us to have any conversations finally right now because it's only the three of the five of us, but I guess my point is that. There's a process that we're going to have to define, and I think we've got enough pieces together that we could probably define, you know, public meeting. You know, similar to the meeting we had about the Lake District where Bill and I put together the presentation where. All the things we were considering, all the things that we want to set the agenda opened up. We're ready to, you know, we're ready to have public comment. We end up not going forward to that meeting because we thought it was redundant with the master plan. But we teed everything that we did for the Lake District, I think we can start that process that that meeting now and then go going forward. Figure out what the basis, you know, based on the public feedback is, we can commiserate as a board, you know, as. More information from the state and or, you know, Aaron talks to other communities, you know, we could wrap that in, but. Like, there's a process to get to like up or pose something. And I think that that's kind of my point is I think that, you know, there's probably some room for that. For that engagement to people and that general level awareness of like, hey, this is happening because. Again, if we just, you know, went and took that map that Aaron put and presented to town meeting. And tried to get people to pass it, I think we'd all get shot and kicked in the head. You know what I mean, like there's a public education component to it and a public engagement component to it and an awareness of like. This is something that we're really thinking about hard, um that I think, you know, there those. I don't want to say those boxes need to be checked, but that process needs to be to be defined such that we can go and execute it.
And I'm not speaking for town administrator Mayo or or anyone in um. In town hall, I think what, you know, we've done a lot of this work that they want to be done already. Over, I mean, we can see it now, right, the last five years, and so I think that's. Personally where I want, you know, whereas a little bit of my pushback is, you know, I'd like to look. Pushback to the state is why, why aren't these units that we've already done to create what they're looking for basically already going to be counted, number one. Number two, how as a board do we look at kind of this multifamily district zoning district um in a different way that's not the typical multifamily that. You know, that we're seeing right now that we feel so make a good job developing already, um so um, yeah, um. I just wanted to say that, I mean, that's kind of, I think the big thing is. Not counting what we've already created, so.
But I mean, we say that, but, you know, we're talking about zoning, the underlying zoning and defining land use, right? The land you should be, you know, if we want to shunt or we want to guide development to these specific parcels. Within the town, we would get, you know, if we want to think about it as credit, we would get credit because places that we zone that already have been redeveloped. Aren't going to get redeveloped, the same thing that we're rezoning it to, right? So like the units, like any any one of the things that we're talking about, right, the units that just got redeveloped at the mill building or by on north. Or uh on, you know, the corner of Albion and North, right? If we want to think about it in in the terms of deep getting credit, you know, that acreage is going to be included in this overlays as a district. And isn't going to be subject to like more development because of this overlay district, right? So like, you know, it, the whole concept is like getting credit for what we've already done, you know, we're talking about trying to, you know. Edit underlying zoning and underlying zoning should, you know, theoretically, if we want the land to be zoned for uh specific use. Then we want the land to be zoned for a specific use, you know what I mean?
Yeah, um. Uh I'm I'm in agreement, I I and I I think we're generally all in agreement with each other, so I I think Jim to your. Uh to your two points, it is about uh underlying zoning and sort of. Figuring out what is the process to move forward, so sort of being prepared for that. As as we go, so what what are our next steps to to do all of that and, yeah, I and I. Yeah, I'm I'm sensitive to the the desire to do a lot more uh public outreach, um. But also the the fear of stirring the pot a little bit, um but so. Do y'all have thoughts about how we move forward from here or what's?
I personally think that what we should do is we should have a version of the Lake Overlay District like. History and, you know, set the course of what we're where we're at, we should have some version of that presentation that's developed by the planning board. That is related to this mixed use overlay district.
Yeah.
I'm more than happy to 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 pitch in to that, I think basically. Aaron and and town administration has done a great job of collating most of the information that the basis that when with the presentation they sent to town council. I I think we do that, we talk about, you know, it to Aaron's point, you know, town engineering went and. Identified three different things that aren't proposed districts, but could be the basis of a conversation. That you could throw up on the screen and invite the public to comment on it.
Yeah.
After we go through, you know, however many of those those meetings where, you know, probably doesn't want to be. All in the summer, right, it probably wants to be spread out over some amount of time and maybe it becomes iterative. After we do that, then I think we get to a point where it's incumbent upon us to engage with, you know. There's probably a a meeting with town council at some point that we as a planning board should present same information, solicit feedback from town council. Use that as the basis of coming up with like a proposed district in that language. And then have, you know, that. District, as as it's defined by the planning board, you know, be the basis of having the further conversations with the with the town. Again, you know, that all that is just get farther out, that my vision becomes more cloudy, but I I think the starting point is. Some sort of public forum that we're inviting feedback from the public as it relates to, this is something that we're going to be looking at doing because of. You know, all the things that we talked about with the state and with, you know, the the information that as presented by Steve Mayo to town council.
So who who um. So it's Aaron and the engineering department, are there are there other? Other boards that we'd sort of want to be working. In tandem with as or or iteratively and I I I think what to what to Jim's point is. Developing some working documents um and just trying to manage them and. Help Aaron and others sort of uh run through the process and uh and start to. Go uh have, you know, continue these conversations um and build some more consensus so that we are prepared. When um when things really do have to become uh more public and more formal. And who else should we be sort of involved in, is that? So it sounds like maybe it's uh right at the moment between um Jim, Aaron and myself to be. Sort of convincing about uh where things are at and where we might go forward, um I I don't um. So.
I can't speak for the board as. So, I'll kind of.
I I mean, I think I think it's, I mean, I will, I will start the process trying to collate up, well. I would recommend at this time that we pump this conversation until we have all the members of the board, I I mean. You know, I'll defer to you, Mister Chairman, but I think that probably doesn't make sense for us to come up with a uh a ball and court action items. On something that's important and starting this process without, you know, two fifths of our board.
Yeah, um I'm certain, I I certainly uh uh. Agree with that and um in Aaron, I um I think we're, we all agree that. Uh it's a very difficult process to to uh to navigate and um. Yeah, um to Jim and Bill's points and to yours, and we certainly deserve credit for the. The units we're we're putting on that um in place now and in zoning zoning for the for those units um and and for everything. Uh the community's done um to plan ahead, so um I think it's. Um helping add um us to help keep this momentum going, um alright, so we um. Uh we'll certainly be coming back to this and um uh I appreciate. Uh everyone's uh thoughtful consideration and and frank comments and the the desire to to work together and and move this forward. And not not um uh compete with or try to um. Uh deviate any any momentum that we've gotten out. So the um thank you, Jim, thank you, Aaron, thank you, Bill, um so the fourth item is uh the procedures for changing the street names. And um uh Bill, I'll I'll cue it over to you, um I can pull up. Uh your document um uh on my screen, um and I want to thank you for. Working with Tom Mullen and getting uh getting us, I think, pretty close to the finishing line.
Thanks, Theo, and yes, um it, the, if Jim and you had a chance to read through. The very bylaw-esque written. Uh comments from or re reformat from Tom Mullen Town Council. It it's it's really amazing um what his mind and what his um help does for us as a board. It's, I I think in bullet points and actions, he just has the ability to write that in a paragraph and have it. Sound very legal, so um I do, I do think we're ninety eight percent there as a board, I. I would love to hear some feedback if each person, uh Jim and and Theo, if you got a chance to look at it. But otherwise, I I think we're in a place where we can, um I don't know, it's, what's the next step, is it? Talking to town council, meaning the town counselors, not town council, Tom Mullen. Or Steve Mayo, town administrator, just see what the next step is, where we do have this bylaw reviewed by. Steve and the town counselors, and then it comes back to us to set some public hearings. Before fall town meeting.
Yeah, Jim, yeah.
Yeah, I only had a handful, I went through it and I agree, uh Bill, I thought it looked awesome. Uh and it looked exactly like as uh as as I would expect uh something like this to look like uh in in terms of format. Um the only handful of things I I noticed going through this that I think are questions that we probably need to to consider is the um. The length of uh the number of characters per street, that's was in uh left blank, I'm assuming intentionally by. Uh Mister Mullen, based on, I I think we as a board should set whatever that is, you know, where different different standards. I've got opinions, but I think that it probably makes sense for us to determine whatever that is. The the filing fee, which I don't necessarily think is something we need to determine right now, I think that probably makes sense with feedback from. Um the town administrator, you know, in terms of whatever we think that that is a reasonable fee to cover the town's costs associated with us, which. I haven't, I haven't the foggiest idea without feedback from them. Um in terms of the, in terms of the um actual content of things that we, I think we should make a decision on as a board. Our position is the public hearing and the um, you know, how to trigger it. As it relates to the application of abutting owners and residents, um there was a question of whether or not. We had had a conversation with the board whether it should be building owners and in town uh town council, Tom Mullen. Um recommended considering making that into residence, um the only thing I'm just cautiously or want to caution or think about. Clearly before we we put that into the bylaw is um a list of residents, because I think that we, our application had envisioned some. Some owner's threshold as it relates to the number of signatures behind being collected, and so just trying to make sure that we think about thoughtfully. How do you actually get, if you're going to include residents in that, how do you actually adjudicate who all those residents are from the town? Without creating an undue burden on um town staff. Um you know, I personally would probably advocate just to go with owners because you can just get a certified a butters list, but that's. There's there's very reasonable arguments countering that, why you want to include residents, since they're the ones who are going to be most directly impacted. And then lastly, my last comment was, as it relates to, does it make sense for us to have? As part of this bylaw, the actual application listed as an appendix similar to our table, tables in the zoning.
Yeah. Welcome, Megan, uh to the meeting, um.
My my apologies for my tardiness, I had a last minute work conflict pop up, but I am here now.
Yes, we we appreciate it and uh, yeah, well, we've all had this last minute work pop ups.
Been a day, but I'm here.
So um Jim, thank you for for all that and Bill, um. Um you you've had any responses, um and I think particularly on the 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 certified a butters list comment, because that's.
Right, well, uh first, the length of characters, um do we just say it's twenty eight, I don't know, that's a number that we have to come up with, our research. Helps us with some of those numbers, um the filing fee, that's some homework I need to do with uh Tom Clark.
Yeah.
And town administrator, uh the public hearing, yes, should it be, um how do we move forward with the list? Meaning the town resident versus or including property owner.
Yeah.
So that's, yeah, that's that's those, that's something for our board to decide, or we leave it at as is. And we schedule the public hearing with the bylaw the way it is, and we do throw some numbers in there and some fees. But we wait to hear some input from the town um. Before we finalize this bylaw.
Yeah.
That then goes to town meeting.
Right.
As it relates to the characters, the the research that I did seemed to indicate the the two thresholds I saw were fourteen and twenty, so I I think if you said. Twenty, that that seems like it's reasonable, I mean, don't want to get too long, fourteen also seems reasonable, so I. I don't really have a strong preference on that, but I think though, I think seeing other communities use those as a threshold makes sense to me, that we would copy it.
Yeah. Alright, let's 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 start with twenty um and and see what uh what gets kicked around. Um I, um Bill, in your conversations with Tom Mullen, like um, did he have any reasons for not? Specify, like putting into the by.
Sorry, I think I lost my.
Alright, you're you're back, um. Did Mullen have any reason for not having seventy five percent or anything specific in the bylaw itself?
No, but I think as a board, we should add that back in.
Okay.
So that's, this was his final draft of making it into that bylaw language, and I think now it's our. Um board's decision to add back in the few items that we need to, like the the blanks for the length of characters, the filing fee. And also um tailoring the the list as well as the.
Yeah, alright. Okay, so um it sounds like we've got, we know the gist of what uh Bill is saying, um. The, why don't um. We, I I marked it up a little bit, um trying to add in um something about the list. The, I'm I'm inclined to to remove uh residents uh who aren't owners. Kind of because that seems very unmanageable, um Megan, do you have any comment?
No, I agree with you.
Yeah, okay. And alright, um. So I think um, yeah, let us, let us mark this up and we'll bring it back to um the meeting at the end of the month. And then then we can go forward. Jim, did you have any other comment about how to trigger the the public meetings and how that gets?
I I think you're, I think you and I are in alignment.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Think if you make the edits, you you just you just reference, I I'm I'm okay with that, and I think we're we're on the same page.
Okay, excellent, alright. That's good, good now, um. Um uh real quick, um master plan update, um. Aaron, oh, well, alright, Bill's coming back.
Sorry, what was that?
Oh, um I was gonna um move to the fifth item on the agenda, but uh if Bill can connect, I think we'll just wrap them.
Oh, okay.
Fold it into the the end of item number four. Item, all right, item number five was just giving the board a quick update on the master plan. Would you like to start or would you like me to?
Theo, you can you can start.
Sure, okay. The we had our second public meeting. It was reasonably well attended. We discussed housing and cultural and historic resources. And I thought a very useful discussion, not as strong attendance as earlier meetings. So I think that does raise the question of what else we might be doing to help wave the flag and and bring people to participate in the in these meetings and and in the survey. The survey is out there. It's on the website. It's due July 24.
That's been changed to August 2nd because of technical difficulties and the the holiday. We just wanted to make sure we gave people enough time.
August 2nd, that's great. Okay. So Bill, we'll circle back to how we wrapped up the street name change by law, but any any comments or feedback regarding the master plan forum?
I think I'll just speak to kind of what you were saying, Theo. I think it's too bad, especially given the conversation housing has in this, you know, in many of our communities and we didn't have the attendance I was hoping for. We still had good breakout groups. And I think it was a very open conversation about housing. My group spent time talking a lot about senior housing. So you know, it was a very open ended conversation that we were having. And then also with the cultural and historical resources. You know, so we'll revisit the whole attendance piece, but you know, I've gone back and looked at other meetings in the past pre-COVID of attendance levels at other meetings in the past. And you know, it still was a good amount of people. And I think this time of the year is hard, but we have to move the process along as well. And so we'll probably have the next two topics, which on the top of my head, I don't have them. We'll probably have a meeting for that, a public meeting for that sometime in early fall, I'd imagine. And so, but please take the survey. That information's really helpful. We understand that people have busy schedules and we're still trying to figure out Zoom or in person is, you know, the best way to go. And hopefully at some point we'll have a hybrid model. But if you, you know, couldn't attend, the survey is just as important information to us and should only take 10 to 15 minutes of your time. So and if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to to myself.
Thank you. The, there's, there's some really useful data that was presented. And that's on the website or that will be right.
Sorry. So the presentation, the WCAT recorded it for us. So that's on the website as well. So you can view that. Where the presentation can be found. And if you'd like to see a hard copy of the presentation, it should be on our website or will be on our website, but you can view the video too. So there's information, a lot of demographic information too, which I think is helpful with 2020 census information. And then just a lot of other interesting data.
Yeah, yeah. The the data that really resonated with me were population stats, short term growth of school age children, and then a drop off in the following decade. And that and then separately lining that trend up with our housing stock. And just, just some good discussions about different kinds of housing types and what's what people might be interested in 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 living in and occupying. And that speaks to different types of housing that Wakefield has and doesn't have, to your point, Aaron, senior housing. Yeah, and et cetera. So so really, really worthwhile. So I was actually lamenting that we didn't have a float in the parade for the master plan. And I'm not saying that tongue in cheek, because I think that would have been lovely. And as well as a float for town staff. So, you know, we'll we'll put that one in the front next year. And I'm I'm serious. And Aaron, you're choking it back, but thank you. So any anybody else have any thoughts about how to wave the flag?
I I like to, you know, Vision 2030, I was thinking about this the other day. I think the first meeting we had, we had like 100 people on the call. But if I remember correctly, it was like January or February. I think we were still in the thick of COVID. No one really had their children's sports after school activities. This is just me thinking, you know, maybe thinking, you know, why attendance? You know, maybe COVID via Zoom was maybe a little higher than what we saw the other day. And so, you know, I think we'll reevaluate if it makes sense for us to have these another one, the next one in person. But, you know, I know Jen McDonald, our communications director, she's great. She put the information out there in all the different places. And so you know, I think really it's just word of mouth, neighbors, friends for the next topic. And again, the survey is just that, just as important to us. So.
Well said. Thank you very much. I and and to your credit and the and Jen McDonald, I I totally appreciate everything you're doing and and the attention that the consultant is bringing to it. And all right, so we we sort of have Bill, but it doesn't appear that we do. So let's move to item number six, the items not anticipated by the chair. The I'll I'll start just real quick. We've received documents regarding a special permit for a mixed use development, 10 storefront, first floor retail with 10 10 apartment units at 198 Albion. I don't know if Jim or Megan had any additional comments that we wanted to make. And if so, you know, we'd be able to deliver a letter to the zoning board. It's due tomorrow. Okay. All right. So the the next item. We received a comment from the Conservation Commission about adopting or or sharing a tree preservation bylaw with Lynn Field. And I don't know, Aaron, if you wanted to mention that.
Sure. So I was talking to our con comm agents in town. And it was brought to my attention that the town of Lynn Field has just adopted a tree preservation bylaw at town, at their town. You know, unfortunately, I haven't had the time to really dig into it and what that language is. But from my understanding, the bylaw is when new subdivisions come forward, you know, I know Lynn Field is a little different than Wakefield, that they have bylaws in tree preservation when they're doing any new subdivision construction and trying to save as many trees as they can when they're building these new subdivisions. So I did send the link to Theo, more than happy to, I just thought it was an appropriate time as we're looking at our rules and regs. And I know we did talk about trees a couple of meetings ago, but just something for people to think about and things, you know, if it makes sense. Again, I know Wakefield's a little different than Lynn Field, but I, you know, as we've seen with some of our subdivisions are getting a little creative in in what they look like based on the land that we have here in town. So more than happy to share that with the group.
That would be lovely. I know we're going to discuss Matt's edits to the the subdivision rules and regulations on August 9. So perhaps, right, just give us enough time to sort of mull it over and then we wouldn't necessarily be tacking those on directly at that meeting, but discuss how to proceed after that. That's great. The, Jim, we did discuss a little bit of our schedule going forward. It seems that in the short term, we're going to continue with our meetings, potentially canceling the August 23 meeting, but we were going to wait and see depending on the availability of board and staff. So and we did, we did anticipate that the November 8 meeting would be canceled due to the election. The I don't know if, so I'll stop there and ask if other folks have any other items to discuss.
I'll just chime in. We have our bike and pedestrian plan, second public meeting this Thursday at 7 o'clock via Zoom. MACC will be presenting the draft plan of the bike pedestrian plan. We had a public meeting back in the fall where we just had breakout section, my gosh, sessions. And then on Thursday, we'll have a look at the plan, have breakout sessions, Q and A. And then MACC will take the draft back, make the edits based on the public meeting, and we'll be meeting with town council to hopefully adopt the plan so we can use it moving forward. So if you have the time to attend on Thursday, it should be a fun meeting. Please do. And yeah, I'll just keep everyone and Theo will too, up to speed on the master plan project. If you can come to the meetings, reiterate it again, be really great. Again, please share the survey. And then, you know, that's all I have and keep working on the MBTA communities. But yeah, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out. And I won't take safe streets from Bill because that's really been him and his group working on that. So.
That's right.
Thanks. That's a good lead in. Can you guys hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, so to add to Aaron's meeting on Thursday, the the comments about the meeting on Thursday, the the MACC report is on the town website. If you want to take a pre look at it. This weekend, Sunday, Safe Street Sunday. If you don't know, from 12 to 4, Lower Common will be getting things going around noon time with Church Street open, a lane on Main Street and some barriers on North Ave. We have a bike rodeo and a bunch of other things going on. So please let everybody know. If you go to the safestreetswakefield.com, you can get the rest of the details.
Thank you. I'm excited. All right. Anything else? Any, any other comments, any thoughts for our agenda next next meeting? I did also want to update the board. We had an email come into the planning board email from a former intern at MACC asking about our history of inclusionary zoning. And so Aaron and I, Aaron arranged a Zoom call with him and Aaron gave a really great history of her, the town's involvement with inclusionary zoning and how we went from 12 to 18% and how it's really, really been applied. And it was, Aaron, you did a great job. And it really did, I think, highlight good progress that the town has made and leadership within the town to adopt 12 and then move to 18 and and the success we're having with it. So that that was really, really helpful.
I mean, it was good for me too, because this is many years prior to me starting. So it was a nice little history lesson of where we got to where we are today. So and something always, you know, the planning board to think about too, as we look at housing, what our affordability is moving forward. You know, what that percentage is or the AMIs we want to look at too. And if people are interested in more information, more than happy to send that.
All right. All right. Well, we've got it sounds like we may just have a very short meeting next time where we'll come back with the street name change. And I'm not sure anything else. If if there are agenda items, we appreciate any thoughts or we'll we'll bring it to the meeting. All right. If there aren't any other items anticipated, we can move towards adjournment. Is there a motion?
Like to make a motion to adjourn?
I will. I will second that.
Thank you. All right. All in favor, Megan?
Yes.
All right, Jim?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Very terrific. And myself, yes. The, I appreciate everybody attending the meeting to the extent that you're able. And I really appreciate everybody's commitment during the meetings and in between the meetings and everybody's hard work. So and and the same to Aaron and Susan. We appreciate it.
Great. Same to you, Theo. I appreciate it.
All right.
Yeah. And Megan, thanks for showing up as I was dropping off.
Kept kept it rolling. Yeah, no, today was, oh, man. Anyway, thanks, team, for, I appreciate the flexibility, like, understanding.
Thanks, all.
You're you.
Have a good night. Okay.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.
Thanks, Susan.
All right. Bye.